I am a member of the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs and also the leader of the delegation and chair of our session. Let me also acknowledge the presence of traditional leader in the Khachabè traditional region, Melumzi Ngwala. From the San Kingdom of Traditional House, Paramount Chief Melvin James Smith. Chief Roland Mayers. And Chief Chris Kennedy. With me, I have honourable members from the Portfolio Committee on Home Affairs. I'm going to start with Honourable Ramalobeng. Honourable Lexhwaase. And Honourable Kanile. We also have Honourable Tito and she's going to join us either today or tomorrow. But before we proceed, can I ask you all to stand? We're going to observe a moment of silence for prayer and meditation. You're allowed to pray in your own respective ways. Amen. Thank you very much. You may be seated. I want to officially welcome you on this very warm and beautiful sunny day here in East London. And I want to appreciate every one of you that have taken the time to be here this morning. And before we proceed, I just want to check if we are okay with just a translation of Isikosa? Or is there a need for any other translations? Can I get an indication? Are we okay with that? Okay, let's do it this way. Is there anyone here would want us to continue with translation in Isikosa? Because you don't understand English or can't follow with English? If you just show your hands, yeah. Okay, cool. So we'll continue. Thank you. We're going to continue with English and Isikosa. Let me also acknowledge the presence of other leaders. If they are councillors, members of provincial legislature, other traditional leaders that we may not have recognized, community organizations. If there's anyone who's holding some sort of office, we want to say welcome and thank you for being here. With that, I'm going to ask the leader in the Khachabè traditional region, Melumzi Ngwala, just to give us a short word of welcome.
Thank you very much, Honourable Chairperson of this committee. Greetings to all the honourable members of this distinguished committee from Parliament. Greetings to all other officials emanating from traditional leaders, councillors, MECs and all other officials, government officials that are here today. We'd like to take this opportunity to extend words of welcome to the Portfolio Committee for being with us today. Especially now that they have come to actually reason to us and engage with us in terms of the laws that are affecting our lives as the citizens of this country. I am making a plea to the community and the people who have come to this gathering to listen carefully to the deliberations that are going to be done here so that we can be able to convey the message back from where we come to our constituencies. By those words, I'm saying let's feel free and be able to be part and parcel of this public hearing. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I feel so warm and welcomed. Thank you very much. So I'm just going to give you a brief background. Let me also acknowledge our staff that's present from Parliament. We have Parliament Home Affairs Committee, we have communications staff, we have Parliament Security Services, we have staff that are supporting us in terms of our public hearings. So we want to welcome them and also our sign language interpreters as well as translators. I also want to acknowledge political party leaders that may be present. Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to go through the purpose of today's public hearings and give you a little bit of a background. So Parliament has come to you, the people, to listen to your views, to take your proposals and your suggestions on the Electoral Amendment Bill. And we are here to listen and take all of your suggestions, proposals and inputs. And we are not going to ask any questions as the Portfolio Committee or members. We are not going to respond and we are not going to engage on your inputs. All we are here to do is listen to what you, the people on the ground, have to say about this bill. We also want you to know that we have not made any decision in terms of the amendments that should be made in terms of the electoral system that needs to be followed. We are here to engage and the public hearings is part of a community public participation process where we come to you as citizens to ask for your submissions. I also want you to know that there's no right and wrong answers and that all views that are expressed will be considered when the committee has to deliberate and finalize the bill. So just to give you a little bit of a background on how we've come to this Electoral Amendment Bill. So on the 11th of June 2020, the Constitutional Court ruled that the current system of our elections is unconstitutional in that it does not allow for independent candidates to be able to contest the national elections. So your general elections and they're not able to contest both the national and provincial legislatures. We are here to speak clearly and concisely. We are here to discuss the issues of the election. So the parts that I should mention that has already been interpreted in Isikosa is that it's referred to as the New Nation Movement case and it was the Electoral Act of 1998 that is unconstitutional, but that's already been translated. And so Parliament was then given 24 months to finalize the process of being able to review the current Electoral Act and be able to then make for provisions of independent candidates to contest the elections. Now, very important, we must understand that it's already a court order, meaning that we must include independent candidates to contest elections. What we are here to do is to listen to what your views are on those amendments that seeks to now include independent candidates. So the Minister of Home Affairs introduced this bill to Parliament on the 10th of January. It was then published in all official languages for comments and we allowed for comments between the 21st of January to the 21st of February, after which we then allowed for oral submissions and we had two days of oral submissions from 13 organizations. And now we have started a process of a countrywide public hearings. So the coastal team, which is this team, we have been broken up into two teams as the Portfolio Committee, has started their public hearings in KZN, then moved to the Northern Cape, then moved to Free State and today we start our public hearings for the next three days in the Eastern Cape. And the other team, which is the inland team that's led by the Chairperson of Committee, Honourable Chabane, and they are currently in the Northwest Province. So briefly, the draft bill proposes an amendment to the Electoral Act to include independent candidates in the national and provincial legislatures. And when you arrived, you would have received documents in different languages. The one is the complete bill, which is the Electoral Amendment Bill, and the other document is a summary of the actual bill and it's in different languages, well, the language that you preferred and you would have received that when you entered. So we are now going to proceed to the submissions that are going to be made at this public hearing from you, the participants and community that have attended. So depending on the number of submissions that we have, you'll have between three to five minutes to be able to speak and present your submission or input. And if you are closer to the time or exceeding, as a Chairperson, I will very politely ask you to wrap up or finish up what you are saying. Very important, we must respect and listen to all views. Like I said, there's no right and wrong answers. So we must respect each other, even if you don't agree with what the speaker is saying. Let's respect them and also allow them to provide their inputs. We also understand that not everyone who's present may want to make a submission. You're also here to listen to the Electoral Amendment Bill and to the proceedings of today and we respect that. But those who are here to make submissions should be allowed to make those submissions when we start. Also, if your submission is quite lengthy, we will allow you to present it or give us a summary or speak to the presentation and then make a written submission. However, if you don't speak to your submission, we will not accept a written submission. I must also remind you that we are still in the midst of a pandemic and so we must observe all COVID protocols. Please ensure that you remain in the seat that you allocated with the social and physical distancing. Please keep your mask on at all time, covering both your nose and your mouth. You will be allowed to take it off when you come to the podium to speak. We have someone who's going to sanitize the mic before and after every speaker to ensure that is. As the Chairperson, when I also sit down, I will put my mask on. But whenever I'm speaking, I will obviously take that out. Please bear with us because sometimes I'm interacting all the time, so I might have my mask off more often than not. And also please respect Parliament Protection Services when they do ask you to put on your mask if they see you without it. It's just so that we ensure safety of other participants that are in this room. We're now going to open the floor up for you to speak. The red chairs in the center is where our speakers are going to be seated. So we're going to call for the first round of speakers. They will be seated and immediately after that, one after the other, you will take the podium. We won't need to introduce each person. You will just come up after that person. But important, when you take the mic, please introduce yourself clearly. Give us your full name and where you're coming from. If you represent an organization, a political party, a constituency, a grouping, it's important to know that because your view is not just yours but a collective if you've come here representing somebody else or representing an organization. So it's important to tell us who you are, where you're coming from or who you represent, but also to indicate whether you support or do not support the Amendment Bill or the amendments. That's important for noting because we are then able to reflect and record accordingly in terms of the submissions made. Also feel free and comfortable to speak in the language of your choice. So if English is not your first language and you want to be able to express yourself in Isikosa, please do so because we do have interpretation. We'd like you to be as comfortable as possible when presenting your submissions. So I'm also reminded that there might be a live broadcast. I'm not sure if it is on a radio station that's supposed to be broadcasting. It's a livestream. Okay, so there is a livestream. It's also on Parliament platforms, so it's good to be audible so that whoever else is not here and is hearing your views are able to hear it clearly. So please speak clearly and use your sharp-stewed voices when you speak at the podium. Thank you. I'm going to call for the first round of submissions. If there's anyone who would like to make a submission, can you just raise your hands where you are? Okay, so I see the gentleman with the check shirt, that's number one. The guy next to him, two. Ma'am, you will be three. Please just make your way over. Yeah, can you just make your way over to the red seats? I'm going to just finish up here. Yes, sir. You can come through. Yes, sir, you can come through. And then I saw, yes, sir, you can join them. Yes, with the blue suit behind him. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Can you join them? Thank you. Yes, sir, with the white shirt. Yes, sure. Can you? I think there's place for one more. Yes, sir, with the red. Thank you. And that completes our first round of submissions. Wow, this is, you know, let's give yourselves a big, big, big hand. So we have our first group of submissions. Thank you very much. We're going to proceed. Please also just remember what I said when you start, your name, where you're coming from, who you represent, if you are representing someone, tell us if you're supporting the bill or not. Please make your submissions clearly and concise, but also if a person goes before you and you feel that they've covered an item that you want to mention, you can just mention it, but you don't need to explain it because we would have got an explanation from the previous speaker. So if you're having a similar submission, just give us the submission instead of explaining it if it's already been explained. But we don't want to suppress any views. Thank you very much. We are now going to proceed. Can I also say that for the purposes of translation, that we will allow the speaker to make the submission and we'll do a summary of the submission instead of having to interrupt the speaker all the time. And we want a summary of the submission. Okay, let's proceed. Sir, you can start.
Good evening to everybody. My name is Mzaketjigijam, coming from PCM Wad 3. I'm a member of the ANC in good standing. My input today, I would like to first mention a fear that I have as a result of... My input today, I would like to first mention a fear that I have as a result of this bill. The bill seeks to give way to independent candidates to contest elections at national, provincial, regional, and by elections supposedly in summary. My fear is that if we have a structured manner which we have currently as according to the current electoral bill before this amendment, and already we have a situation where councillors elected by communities in the transparent manner are showing a discipline or an indisciplined fashion of being able to be maneuvered and maneuver their ways in trying to get their way other than the way of what the communities do and thereby also underperforming in many ways. And yet they've got a place where they can account on which are the same communities, the branches, the regional structures to provincial and national. That creates a platform where these people account. And yet we still have a messy situation where communities are still not satisfied with the manner in which they are serviced by the very same people. Now the bill seeks to give independent candidates, which have no base, where they could say in a collective fashion they account at. So that is the first fear. And my question is that why should this bill be approved to give way to such individuals if such individuals have got no organizations they represent except for themselves? Number two, we have a problem of unregistered immigrants in South Africa and those that have married our sisters because they seek a permanent residence. And now this gives a leeway to such individuals. And we do note that their numbers are increasing very alarmingly. Now the bill, after if it were to be approved, will give a chance to all these foreigners to now have a say in our government. And their numbers are very alarmingly increasing that we'll find ourselves now ruled and led by these people, which we still have a problem with because of the manner in which they penetrate and come into our country. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you do the translation, I just want to indicate that I did say at the beginning, a court order was already granted saying that the Electoral Act is unconstitutional. It means that you have to make changes to accommodate independence. So we can't go back to a court case that has already been passed. I just want to clarify that. Thank you very much. We're now going to proceed. You use the mic that's on the podium, yes, that's the mic for speakers. So if we just...
Financially and economically, South Africa, I can be corrected. It's a challenge, it's a challenge for parliament to handle. I'm not going to let the government do that. It's a problem. I'm not going to let the government do that. The city, man, market, where government, the bill. It's a problem. No peace. The moment, the government, the bill, come, come. It's a problem. It's a problem. The government, the bill. The government, the bill. It's a problem. It's a problem.
Thank you.
My name is Makobaya Kauliza. I'm coming from Watshri. Chairperson, all that I want to say is that first things first and last things last. And secondly, I'm standing here to be against this amendment bill. In South Africa, we're not financially ready to go ahead with this bill. South Africa has got a number of unemployed people that we should cater for. Therefore, I propose that the government must have a social grant to support the unemployed people instead of embarking on this particular program. I thank you.
Just before you continue, I think I omitted to say this when we started. This hearing is for the Electoral Amendment Bill. We will not take submissions on service delivery. We will not take submissions on anything else outside of the Electoral Amendment Bill because we are not in a position to respond to anything. We're here to take submissions on the Electoral Amendment Bill. So if you're going to bring in the service delivery matters around us and the challenges, which we know that there are, but it's not the platform to be able to express that. So I'm going to urge you to stick to the Electoral Amendment Bill. Thank you. As we proceed, please don't forget to tell us whether you are in support or not in support of the amendment.
Firstly, my concern, there's no proper consultation with communities concerning this bill. See, Venge, this week, and then we are here now. I think the Parliament is failing us. They are supposed to first to go to the communities so that we can have engagement, thorough engagement with the people because good democracy, the people shall govern. So now, just to call us today to be here, it's not proper consultation. The majority of the people in this, in South Africa, are not aware, even here in Paphalo City, are not aware that we are here to amend or to say, yes, the bill must continue or not. It does my first concern about that. Concerning the bill, there was a research, if I can still recall, if I'm not mistaken, up whereby constitutionally, it's correct for independent candidate to stand. But my challenge with the bill is that this year, the local government election, the leading party that is ANC, is there no guidelines, SIT? In order for you to be a councillor, you are supposed to be taken to community members. But there was a lot of manipulation in that process. I'm worried that now, independent candidate, where are they going to account? Because even the current councillors are not going to the communities to take mandate and account, because they belong to political parties. So how much more, independent candidate, where are they going to account? Otherwise, I cannot say we must not accept that because research, constitutionally, it's a must we had to allow them to contest the election. Due to research, constitutionally, because the constitution of the Republic of South Africa is allowing them to contest, so I do support.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. My name is Yaliwe Kovuza. My first concern in respect of this bill is the fact that I feel as though Parliament has not done enough to consult the communities. So my main concern is the issue of no proper consultation being done by the Parliament of South Africa. The second part is that constitutionally speaking, and as it has been supported by research, it is correct for independent candidates to contest elections as independents. However, my concern is that even during the process of local government elections, the ANC, which is the majority party, did institute a system where community members were the ones who chose who their candidates would be. My problem with this is that this process became heavily manipulated, even though the community was involved in electing its preferred candidate. As such, Chairperson, I submit to this committee that I do support the bill because it is supported by research and constitutionally. However, please note the concerns that I'm raising as it relates to consultation and manipulation of processes when it relates to the election of independent candidates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to acknowledge the presence of MPR Amashé that has joined us this morning. Thank you very much. Let me just correct that he's actually a member of Parliament, an MP. Whoever came to tell me it was said MPR, but it's MP, Member in the National Assembly. Thank you.
I'm a member of the parliament. 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 It's a problem. It's a problem. I'm a member of the parliament. I'm a councillor. I'm a member of the parliament. If we have oil, it needs to be lubricated. And again, I'm a member of the parliament. The democracy must be lubricated, right? If failure to clean up the communities, the lack of community leadership vacuum that is there. Here, I'm afraid, because it's structured as civic, as a bull, or as a woman in 1992. They must be swallowed by the ruling party. As a result, I'm a member of the parliament. 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 And again, I'm a member of the parliament. I'm a member of the parliament. And again, I'm a member of the parliament. I'm a member of the parliament. And again, I'm a member of the parliament. 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 So it's right, the bill, it's a matter of lubrication. It's a matter of lubrication. I'm a member of the parliament. As a result, I'm a member of the parliament. 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 You go as a member of the parliament. You go as individuals. To revive the civic structures. To revive other structures. I'm a member of the parliament. 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 I'm a member of the parliament.
The millionaires.
My disability name. The group in the in this year. This is a great office of the chief state law advisor. City Tina, a very classy idea behind them. As a class in long time. Is this a to see to city long table? Who's a more inventive really? Now if I can guess, reinventing the wheel. City economy system is seven zero. He ambele another idea behind long table. A power go must follow. Apple Google EPR P P N B Knew what? City magusayansu la system. He put to lunch a panapaya. Um, Zegelo. City um Zegelo magususwe. Well, it's all an independence. He political parties as soon as as soon as. Go by Zizo Eziza Obangelinduba. At whom do he want counselor? Got to a report a party, not a reporting word upon your call. Si for a total distance. Um, do on me the word a report equal to what in? Who can be called midly personal intermediary? Between Abashali. No, no, not Abashali. City Maxi, yes, all the system go low, number two. City independence must finance way. So any innovation gets it. Yes, it is a classic system is seven zero locally. Independent was fine, was finance way. Eh, go way process of elimination. Eh, city must be the scope a part of A N C. He what eh candidates pa? Is it get zero a Galapeno? The eliminator, the the we come to. City maguenswe go low, low, na la pa well, eh. Get good, but the elimination system pa low out here, I will tell you. Qua pay asance. Eh, even go, yeah, go, go, oh, so financial go I S in Jenga political parties. Uglunsele nama tuba A K. Affair in nama tuba Abo. Baza, I go with political parties. Eh, number three. City long table we are past am. I city. He constituencies must be gang of province. Most society, he is a legend of Abashali. Tango, eh, who's a Puma Bandu still Galapeno. Bangasoundelka cool city get Tina. No, no, who say yes, we districts. Eh, who went there, who can't, and I don't want to pin a good read in my case. Says, according to municipal parties, eh, 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 Elizabeth. Queen, that was in a district, so you met Rose. Who say que? Good, but the formula is again, so I, you, but. Go, when I live, I want to clone down, but I will tell you about that, so I banga. Clone down. Uglunsele Lindoba eh, okay, eh, it is. In the back, who, okay, now? Inga, legal, and it's one of the metro. And go city of Juarez, we come to Zegelo. Eh, go, when I live, I want to tell you about. Eh, eh, onando, I bangelinduba city is. I like of accountability. Eh, you lend us a better line, dova, masuke, do we political parties, kuba, kuba independence? My, I put me, Abashalini, Abu, yeah, Abu, yeah, Abashalini. City, again, go, 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 be la, my, be quick recall laws. In Jemba, Lomdu, so, too, you, I'm Abashali. Abashali, my, but what's on bees, Alomdu? Go, go, city, eh, now, well, it's all an independence. My, be quick listy about. Who can handle that, K, you see, I'm a woman, I'm gonna go by elections. My, be quick listy about, do, go, when the process of elimination method, eh, you? Kufa, I'm slammed, you, glow, 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 region, glow district, about, I tell you, um, Zegelo. Eh, but, well, eh, but, well, eh, but, she, eh, she, eh, you? Ze, Kuthuba, Okona, low, who can allow, like, you, eh, too, you, I'm Abashali. Abiso, I'm Abashali. Who replace, I'm going, yeah, who can be, who's, yeah, by elections, because low, low process, eh, eh, disruptive, eh, goes.
Thank you.
Eh, thank you very much, Chaperson. Eh. We are in class, or are you in class? Okay, for record purposes, Chaperson, I don't support the notion of independent candidates. Eh, another point that I want to make is that they must have a recall clause. Whereby you will have a list of candidates. And then the best performing one should be the one who should be elected. If a situation permits. Then the one who's not eh, eh, performing must be recalled. Because it's very important that independent candidates, if they may be permitted, they must account to the people. And then there must be no political party eh, that is interfering eh, in this process of independent candidates. Also, independent candidates should, if they may be permitted, they must be financed. And also, there is a notion that I want to put that this bill might be wrong in terms of constituencies. Eh, let's use the district model, not in order to avoid the issue of demarcation. I thank you.
Uh, I, I just need to seek clarity, because I know it's not questions, but it's clarity. Are you saying that you don't support a constituency based electoral system? Yes, sir.
I'm saying I don't support the bill as it is. I do support the idea behind the bill. I support, that's why I'm saying, let's go to the system that is operational at local level. Which is both P R and what? Eh, I just don't support the current bill. And the castle, long time, too, you know, I got a massive, eh, then, oh, okay, you, but, yes, you, it's about, who made the, but, so, my, Kaya. And eh, Ted again, eh, proportional representation. Of course.
For, for record purposes, eh, he's saying status quo should remain. Is that what you said? Thank you.
Thank you very much, eh, Chaperson. My, the bullies, eh, glad I'm part of this, eh, goes to. Next, I was a parliamentary song and also to the traditional leadership. Eh, now, we're young. My name is Patrick Sunnis. I'm the provincial secretary of the South, independent South African national civic organization.
Just, just repeat that for me.
Pindaneh. Independent South African National Civic Organization. Thank you. Okay, Carla, Masilbullele Tuba. Got to, not to say, Paga Missa, they eat. Si, Bona, ingati, linko, I, 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 a, Abashali. Go, but once you take an independent. You take an individual, like, Charlie. The Bonnelet in Cuba, I was in Queenstown last week. And it merrily, merrily fall down because of that. Go, but I was, you can't speak about me without me. For example, this morning, we only got about transport. Maybe after nine. Which is the coordination process was really not good here. For example, the princess, Princess Carmen is not here. Because of transport. I also nearly missed the event because of transport, which is coordination. I was looking there standing just as a community leader when people were entering. You know, there were people, some people picked up to come and register first before the other people. Which is good, it's fine. But how were those leaders identified as leaders? How is other people identified as not leaders? So it was really not organized in a good manner. We hope and trust that it will be in the future. Eh, coming to this bill. We can't, as organization, at this stage, refuse the bill at present moment. We do support the bill. It's just that eh, we propose that the bill should be safeguarded. Actually, a lot of eh, proposals have been meant here, have been mentioned here already. So I don't need to dwell much on that, but it's a serious point that the bill needs to be safeguarded. And those independent candidates at local level, there should be a threshold for them. There must be enough evidence that those communities has elected them. Because in South Africa, we are sitting with a problem of unelected leaders. Which, at the end of the day, they are underperforming because they were just pushed to be there. I heard my friend was talking here of public participations. That was eh, that was eh, proposed by organizations. I was sitting in my ward and looking. As a process, Zenzi, eh, as it, ma, we, Abashali. But the candidates at present moment in my ward. The candidates that were elected or proposed by the communities, they are not there in that seats. It's other people that are there in that seats. Then you are sitting with these things of by election, wasting the state money. So, see, Chogem, Charlie, I'm Pambi, the city, let, Bill, say, supporter, Kai Lungi, so. Okay, Abashali, bang, I, Bingawa, I'm a club, eh, goes.
Thank you very much. I am now starting to, to time, so it's a bit of an unfortunate thing for the last three speakers. Eh, because I've realized that I've been giving a leeway as a chair. And some people have been really overdoing it, so I'm going to try to do that. But one more announcement before we, we do that translation. I'm given to understand that there are more people that have arrived. And we do not have any more seats available. Um, and due to COVID protocols, we cannot accommodate more than we already have. So I'm going to make a very special plea and request. If you've presented and if you're okay with having to leave, um, and allow for other people who may have come to, to be seated. We'd appreciate that, or if eh, you know, you, you think that you've been part of your submissions and you now can allow for others. Eh, to please, please also allow for that eh, process, so that we can allow for other people to come in. Thank you.
Pambi, go, but, so, be, eh, Pambi, Lee, bendinest, eh, Lord, you, Shalo, go, but, now, okay, but, so, let, eh, let, oh, Kanye, oh, let, eh, ah, pa, uh, for, but, in, do, look, so, it's, Kanye, la, o, z, f, men, eh, so, it's, eh, la, okay, but, eh, uh, Nick, eh, Abanya, Abame, Paje, it, Tuba, look, but, Bangeni, Paka, Tina, Boba, Quaz, O, Mame. Thank you very much, Chaperson. My name is Pat Sonisi from the Independent South African National Civic Organization. The bill in its form is not entirely in favor of the people. An independent candidate cannot account to the community. So it is important that, as we amend this bill, we ensure that there is a rigid consultation process with members of the community. So that they are part and parcel of choosing their elected leadership. So we want to emphasize, Chaperson, that there must be a threshold for independent candidates to reach. So that it is clear that it is the will of the people that has elected them. It will be very important that this process of a threshold is very important because there must be evidence that these people come from the will of the people. So in summary, Chaperson, we support the bill. We support it so that communities do not continue to become victims of having unelected leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. We are going to proceed.
Um, oh, Carla, my disability, Chaperson. Um, the bullies, eh, executive, go, but, once, the bullies, eh, now, we go, Kelly. Um, I come, I'm Simon, Hillboy.
If you please come a little bit closer so we can hear you, thank you.
Oh. Eh, I come, I'm Simon, Hillboy, and Puma, eh, Tim, Baza, who, one, thirty-four. Um, Shalo. Mna, and, for, who? Who, I'm, I'm, so, it's, because, and, I'm, the, I'm, the, I'm, the, I, eh, eh, it, eh, it, eh, it. Because, one, okay, Carla, I'm, 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 the, I'm, the, I, you, Cuba. Calo, Glan, Dole, eh, is a fulla.
Ngenlela e organizedengayo asifuni ukuwati ngoba silapa city ipalamente yenzen ngokweneleyo. Kubaba apasitotea ngomxali sitete kabantu abafuna oguzmela sokaoza uteta ngamtingeko. Dibe sishia abantu nga simva bafanba balapa. Ngenlela enye nzenkayo lendoba yazi wengabantu. Andibonangu ba niyenzengenlele right. Isasi sosoba isegu ya wonge umtu kota niti niyenzela wonge umtu. Tifunukwe zalonda ondikrete apo. Eh eh yo nando endiza guyo kulomte tu andu pas. Eh umte tu ndinga pasinje. Di funuti apa esau dafrica. Si kabantu balapa esau dafrica. Tibona singe kabi ko kuela la kuela zinga esifunukuleenza lalomte tu. Kaujonga kwamanya amazwe. Apo kukuba kona lalomte tu. Aska abi ko tina kuela zinga. Singa wachali balapa esau dafrica. Particulali tina njwe mnyama. Manditi kase nza lalomte tu si vula inyoba. Yoslo shesake esakwe ngabo ngoku. Abazao ti. Tangaba sinjula lomtu singa wachali kwezo ndaozetu sinjula guye omxali. Ba songe uba lomtu u u ingondo yaké. Ihtaka nipega ngakananina. Ba ngakwazi ukumsebenzi sa. Ba umsebenzi sele infuno sago. Sibone wenzeka lendoyenze kayo ngoku. Sinestate capture apa kueli lisongo. Ngen doya abantu ababe kwepa ya ngumbuto wetu. Ba ba ngakwazi ukobserva i rules ne ne conditions zombuto wetu. Ba ambisaa intando yaabo. So di tigemna andiambe sanayoko ba. Kuzaba no shesake abaza pusha i agenda sabo ngazo ezie independent. Eh ndikrete. Ndye kuindo kuinda ba. Di manen di manen funugwenza i court ingezinye i countries esichonge lakuso. Aujonga kwezinye i country. Kune country apa eziloyo. Zilua kuba zipuna ogungena kiste. Zenge abantu abafunungena kisteti. Ba kontrola isteti. Ngenjongo sabo ezizotwa ezingeko ogulue la abanye abantu. Because kau kontrola isteti ukontrola isteti. Kubakune resources ezipaya. Injongo kesabantu bayela is ezaresources. Tingaya pa kuina Nigeria. In Nigeria niyabonendu yenze kayo pa. Lando kasesa utata individuals ap. Sisabona ap.
Please wrap up. Can you please wrap up?
Oh. Oh sorry mshala ngapambili. Andiklingba uchi time up and va. Eh kwezo kwezos kwezo countries. Ni bonaku siliwa kulue la ndo ngulue la i resources the state. So eyo nando ke mna endinga yechondi ti andiambe sanalomte tu. Kubakusa ba nenendo engasulu ba lulaleko apa kueli liso engos.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Chaperson. My name is Bulelani Makutzola from Watfo. I am representing Cambridge Development Structure. Chaperson, for record purposes, I am totally against this amendment bill. And furthermore, Chaperson, let me also take this opportunity to greet our traditional chiefs who are here, our community members of parliament and all protocol observes observed. Also Chair, let me air my concern that this event was not properly organized on the side of parliament. Because if you are dealing with the issue of people, you must make a proper announcement and inform the community at large. Also Chair, I've got a concern that in South Africa as a country, we're not ready to utilize this model of independent candidates, especially as the black community. Furthermore, if we allow this model to go forward, we will be allowing opportunity opportunists to use this model for their own enrichment. An example Chair that I can give you is a step capture that has been ravaging government because of people who are not observing the rules. Therefore Chair, I am standing to oppose this bill. I thank you.
Thank you very much for the for the submissions. Before I proceed with the next round of submissions, if there are, I think there's two very important points that I want to just explain or clear up. The first one is that the Constitutional Court has already ruled that the Electoral Act is unconstitutional.
Ingakuloka lakukuba inkundla onkakosiseko ye yaniko esikuwebo sokba lamte toka nineteen ninety-eight. Awambisani nomkakosiseko kanya awambisani nemimisele na masolo cha onkakosiseko.
And that to the extent it requires that the that adult citizens who are independents should be allowed to be elected into those legislatures. So just summarized, it is already ruled that we must include independent candidates to contest the elections, which is your national and provincial legislature.
Besesini kiwe isikuwebo inkundla onkakosiseko sokuba abakazwa abazimelayo. Ba fumelekile indoba basitazele isukundla. Kuisinzo kuisomte tu nezinzo kuisomte tu samapondo nezessizo isikuwebo. Besesini kiwe gokoke ba fumelekile ngoku kukubake ngoku indoba kusau sekenswanzani kuya pambili. Besesini kiwe isikuwebo so.
And as part of this judgment, they have given parliament twenty-four months in order for us to be able to make that amendment or correction.
Tanganga ngokubako ipalamente inikwe inyanga esga mashumama bini anesine. Ukuse yenze izilungi so kulomte tu ozoto ubanda kanya abakazwa abazimelayo.
So I don't want you to leave from here thinking that I made a submission that said, I don't agree with independents. And then when the bill gets passed, you say, nobody paid attention to me. Because we have to include independents. There's no not including independents because there's a court order that's already being granted.
Ndima kengelethimuna asifuni indoba apa kawena uye wata ayu mna ndiwufumeleani. Kubengatimshambi awamamelekanga inkundla onkakosiseko iti ona. Palamente tukunika inyanga esga mashumama bini anesine. Ukubaweze izlungi so ezizo kupange la indoba kutukwe abakazwa abazimelayo.
But the question is how?
Umbosu tige ngoku indoba siyanjani pambili sizi fakanjani ezizlungi so.
We all agree that they must be included and that they should be included. But there is obviously certain things that need to change in order for us to accommodate them.
Siyavule indoba nage makaku mabaku kaba abakazwa. Koto ngoku iti indoke ngoku indoba senzanjani siwafakelanjani amasolo cha kulomte tu osayiloyo. Ukusu kenseki isindoba abakazwa bassebenza ngentele fana deklayo. Na kpanzi kwe mimisele nemikata nguitile eyi wewe kpanzi komte tu.
So the bill has recommended some changes and amendments in how we accommodate for them. And that's the purpose of our hearings is for us to know whether you agree with the current form of this amendment or you disagree with it and what are your submissions? What do you think should and shouldn't be there?
Iindose tibeni kayo namshalje indoba nage ingabake ngoku kwezimbono zifaka kulomte tu sayiloyo. Ingabamshambi ngoku buona kwakwa zilungi lokanya zilungaanga. Uba akunza lomshambi opebisantu niwena.
And I think important to note for noting, even when you are thinking about this, is that the Ministerial Advisory Committee that was set up said well submitted two options in terms of the process that we should follow.
Ikomite abapatiswake yasni ka inzele zimbini efneke siskete. Ukusake samkele lomte tu slomele ojiloyo wesonyulo.
The one is a minimalist approach where we keep the current system in its very minimal form and allow for independence. And the second one is to go via constituency based representation.
Itige indo eh lakomit iti oni ukuka lamshambi klingesnoli sebenzi sa. Indoba sissebenzi lenkubi koyo apo untumshambi ayi onyulelukundla ngokwamanani baba voti. Eh gamafuchana nage PR system. Okanya mshambi sissebenzi la angubo yokba umdanyle mshambi ngileti lemasumsakelo mshambi. Uye mshambi palamente ngokwamananwa fumele kulengi. Iconstituency based system kula semzi.
And again, let me stress that there is no final decision. We are now just taking submissions based on those two options or recommendations.
Gamafuchana nage banbaku ti aska figeli likulonda au. Ilondo ke ngoku esimbono zimbinisi kanga nyewe. Aska statisikubotina si komite ilondo silapake ngoku. So ke sitela ke siyambi kpanzike kwalonze.
So we're going to move on to the next lot of submissions. I see two hands already, please sir, the two of you come to the front. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. That's where I'm going to stop.
So tige sisa kenge nukunchigalo olande layo.
I I unfortunately because there's a number of submissions, cannot take someone if you're going to go the second round unless if there is still space. But this time around, there is not going to be a leeway of time. You only have three minutes due to the number of, I've seen many more hands that want to be raised and I have to allow them. Ma'am, at the back, if I'm not mistaken, you have spoken, right? Yes.
Esia kela kabanbaku indoba umtose itetile niwwe ituba loteta. Angabisese sokba yonge indo irekotiwe ipaliwe. Zengo shala lukubaga lukuzinisi zanla banisabanda wafunu pefumla klomba. So nega umtunga amnye i three minutes imisuzu mithatu. Ubaso utetile ongabisa tetokuesbiin. Ba banisabanda wafunu tet.
Alright, so please, please just bear with us if you have spoken. I'm not going to allow you to take a second round because I see there are many hands for submissions and we are limiting you now to three minutes. And we'll ask you to to wrap up or stop at three minutes because I can see that there's quite a bit of of people.
Sitela kutshalenge kula imisuzu mithatu sokba banisabanda wafunu pefum.
Okay, let's start. Singa talisa.
Tanda mani eh eh vagan. Chano ngapambili man buli saman. Ni ikamalamdo nglorisheba. Tisukai Watfo. Ndiya ivaa leexplanation yakwe indoba itikiri welendo. But according itikiri watu taj. Isengapindi buye lumva lendo ngolshobilu. Lepele erongo. And isu sebenzi. Au not ngoku ukui chaos ngoku ipate si one thousand abes South Africa. Songe utipinde uye fakabanyabantu abangasukwa asba. Ba zanani ketukuteliso kutu amalbe uncavni. And yenzo ngentele righte portugale. Because alkoza nele ipate si one thousand ipalamente tumena abanbafunba independent. I I abana ipate abano abano kuya guyo pa. Indoni funa babaye independent bon. Ngoku ipalamente ilalule ngoku paramente. Kuku kuku u u fuga pa inda tipeto ayopa. I I lando ya address ka president ka. Ubo mokipen e nindoa i. Ukipende uye fakabanyamandala fkebatalenge bonu abe. No lepele i go righte. Let's think ma ma kuinwe nindu. Thank you.
Ukukolo rengwe ngwe bashla. Eh diklinga fano ngoku ba. Lendo magendite teneskors.
Just give me a second. I think I must explain this issue in closer.
Kaloku indebanke indogobana ipalamente ibe lap. Indoyo kubaba. Kubeko ama kumchu ase. Lomte tu kuinkundla yomkakosiseko inkundla leyo eyo kibela abes South Africa.
The reason why we are here is because there was a movement that brought the matter of the Electoral Act to the Constitutional Court. That is why now we are embarking after that judgment of the Constitutional Court.
Yakueba inkundla yomkakosiseko yati. Lomte tu wolue nyulo ophelela kumakela ezopolitiko. Unamnye nomkakosiseko.
The Constitutional Court ruled that the Electoral Act of nineteen ninety-eight, which only gave people to be affiliated to political parties in order to be elected as public representative is unconstitutional.
Lendo ge iteta ogokuba. Ukuba ngoku. Isayonoto indoyo kubaba. Umdu eh una konna ogokuba. Abe gumtuzmela. Guo kusikuwebo eso.
Now, it's not it's not debatable whether you can be a an independent public representative. The judgment has already been given to give way so that there can be independent candidates. The judgment has already been issued.
So mawana islungu besesetewa Honorable Pille. So I I'm sure basa by by sebevile lapad. Ben senselanja bandaba bakuti bayazino yogo ba. Lendo yogo kubanngoku eh pulapule utata udi. Ay iya utino ngoki beyinfiti abandaba nins. Se isikuwebo se inkundla ay isayonoko. Indongo ke ba lulaleyo indoyo kubaba. Ni na ngoluwenu lufo. Eh niklinga fano kubana ipalamente ifanelba i kantatajani na. Utiniseki sa ogokuba. Ilunge lo na banda ba gumtuzmela. Bayakwazi ukuli fumana. Nanini akwazi ukta tinakheba kagufuneke abefotel. Iya fakala ngoncho wote nangan. Engos.
Thank you very much. Translation of our first speaker, just a short summary, yeah. It's fine, you can proceed without his name because we have it for the record, yeah.
Thank you Chaperson, my name is Mr. Endima. I hear your explanation about the fact that we cannot go back and what is done has already been done as it relates to this law. However, in my view, this bill is wrong. There is already chaos as it relates to this country where there are too many political parties. Now, this means that this bill wants to create a process where we have an ungovernable country. This will just create chaos. I do not support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Engosimshala ngapambili. Mandil bulale tu balaso unegalon ngofuma nekilelo. Kuna hreka esene. Uchola eluktuka. Glalalia semtansani wa watet. Ommele umboto ekutwa i one South Africa movement under the leadership of Utatuma Ymani Umus. Estendisitu ngalebil sikliye kakulu. Siti sia itagazelela. Sia itagazelela kakulu. Ka eyo nando sitlingba fanba sia ingwenela. Ngalebil. One sitlingba fanba. Landima ipa. Kussection three one. B. Utetange amount. Unfortunately for now, i amount ipaluanga. Suveza kelimkrimbi kuba snalando eti. Sinefiyeye indogobana i amount. Okanya ipalamente i amount ka itisaida. Gaski inga itomi. Ngobaga loku ababantu bazie independent candidates. Kabantu abazouniwa i primary mandate. Gomba buti. Abando bangenando. Bandaba sogolayo. Ka abatinga iskokelo esikot. Ogusbiini sia bawela kindogobana ipalamente. Ikuchonge. Umba wamanani. Ngobaga loku ukubanga ba uzauti kauteta. Ge independent independent candidate. Ofuni indogobana maybene nani Eli Pako fifteen thousand to twenty. Ofmansi indogobana kwa el nani Alliance kwa i what denzumsakelo. Zes yeses indosbal indogobana mshambi umtrimba wamanani. Iukala sele ipalamente. Elukibela kengshala ngapambili transa olshala kpanz. Gaski ke i indo efana na landokwa kage ukubalekiskors. Landokwa zi entry requirements. Ikisheki sheke ipalamente kulando etike singa bisapiinda. Si betwe yindalebe kujwangaayo kundwe eti. I criteria le yokungena. Kwamalungu asindependent candidates nogo. Maykeke ibeke elbala. Itaka inga filagali ukwanzel indogobana. Ndinga tunyo angabachali ndibendinge naine potentiali capacity. Okanya i capacity yokmela wachali.
Wrap up.
Okay. Gebake ndisama uvelala lamitrimbi iti iskoloke ngelnyitlayasha. Sia ngait. Lando itike ngelnyitlayasha lomtu makeke afetwe kuchekishindogobana ekibelin. Unanola amantla okanya ulungele na oba anga umela lomsebenzi. And elukibela kelando isa sbuysela kulando iti uchulmede makabuye lebandwi. Dino warke ngomtu otikayeta eta etange accountability. See the communities, we were well structured and designed to account on our local authorities such as our traditional leaders and state institutions.
Thank you.
So Chair, I might have missed this organization a bit.
No, it's fine. Just give us the.
Okay. Thank you Chaperson. We have a mixed view about this bill. Firstly, we must state that we are happy about the bill, especially as it relates to section three one, where you are talking about an unspecified amount. The fear that we have as this organization is that this amount must not be high because independent candidates will be given a mandate by a majority of people who are poor in this country. So we want to emphasize to the to parliament that the issue of the amount must not must not create a situation where independent candidates cannot afford to stand to begin with. We also want to talk about the issue of the threshold and highlight to parliament that in some instances, it is not possible for an independent candidate to meet a threshold of, for example, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand people who must vote or elect the independent candidate. So in some instances, this number does not match up with the number required for a ward to stand. So we want parliament to look into this issue and ensure that independent candidates are not disadvantaged because of a requirement that cannot be met. Thirdly, we want to emphasize that there must be a clear criteria that must be clear for independent candidates to stand. It must be determined by parliament. There must be a vetting process to to test whether the independent candidate has the necessary skills and capacity to lead a particular community. I want to emphasize that I believe that having an education does assist a person to becoming a good and effective leader for a community. So we want to stress that this is not, this must not be just an open process, but there must be clear criteria set for independents that they must meet and parliament must help to do this. These this criteria will help to determine if a person is fit to stand. Lastly, I want to emphasize that as communities who are very capable of holding people accountable, there are structures in communities and organizations that exist to ensure that each and every elected person is held accountable. So I want to emphasize that the communities are capable and we can do this. And therefore, even if we have independent candidates, we as the communities will be able to hold them accountable. Thank you Chaperson.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Chaperson. My name is Cat Muji. I am from Watfo. First of all, let me welcome the ruling by the Concorde. In an idle world, I would be supporting the bill. So for record purposes, I support the bill. However, I like the fact that you mentioned in your in your address earlier, the how part. How do we get there? Because this is done. And if we had an independent electoral body that does not have as many loopholes, then it would make a difference for us to have independent candidates that are going to 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 make sure that they enter into the space and then they become successful president if that's what they'll be contesting. But you talk about two options here. And I would say that in my submission would be to say that the constituency based approach must be the one that prevails because when you talk about the budget and the the financial implications that get involved when we we talk about registered parties, you have small parties that come up every now and then, for example, in the local government election. They've had to go where they do not have a budget or a funding from IEC and they make a a plan. So basically, independent candidates can also do the same thing. However, I'm saying that none of this is going to matter if the IEC still has loopholes because the reasons to why communities are burning is because of the presiding officers that are coming from particular organizations or political parties that rig elections and all of that. So basically, in an idle world, we would be supporting this. But we know that even the candidates that are going to be independent will still fall victim of the system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Engosimshala ngapambili. Mna ndiawakasa lomte tu kokoku tetakwam. Ha apa emsante Africa ukuko imi tetoeveninisi eteta ipiki san. Tifuna utkila endwe nieti abantu mabaketwe lulunt. Lendo isa utaniseki sa ukubawa no banina ozenga pambili eluntwe nunguntu oketwe lulunt. Kusoloko kuko amatrembo amanakulayo pakuko uniulo makasha onki. Londo iteta ukuti likona ichoba lukubana. Abantu abazimelayo naboba kwasu ukuzmela bo nyuwelu lulunt. Londo itike mshala ngapambili mna ndiawakasa lomte tu naboba zimelayo mabazame nabo. Ukukukukukwazi indoba bapatali lema li ifuneke ayo ukuse naboba zimela baketwe lulunt.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Engosimshala ngapambili. Mantadel tuba tibulele kukaala. Tifunukuti tisauteta kindepumakum tisukemond Watfo Cambridge. Tigusidi FP Community Development Forum. Ndiya khasenbono evela ipalamente. Ngobaga lukusele i kweki welendo already judge. Now smeloku verale krisa kengoku elitimelo wenzeka njani. One, lomkazwa kaya velayo. Maybene ngomkazwa obekanti uyazwa kabachali apa. Ekshale nimbona nayoleyo. Ogusbiini aske nwe kaya zouvela kacui. Ina dikani ngumdo sele velo wenzeka ubusela ngapambili. Obeka tepukubeka ngapambili. Ben ngumdo azwa yo ben ngumdo clean ben ngumdo olande lewayo ngabachali. Abu ye esener report futu kabachali ubanga banese ziniso zindo islandeleleke. Kubeku isikuwebo esitata. Ngobaga lukusanele ngoslo shesake esbo nyula namshalje. Banga inoku ye Cambridge busala mshakelo. Lendo tibana kipalamente namshalje kufu kuzolo sisilwa. Kutebetale lukansile pa lukansile kanga stale eli. Ebanake uifunene nasias. Patke ngoku ibe kanti kusabako imi kata nguitata. Because kalokibele ngoku lendo seli kwekiwe ipalamente. Now ke ngoku funeka snikuwe ifortba imi kati.
Kwenkele zonke esikona. Ndongo Tumisani Yekele, Mtsane, Kawat Twenty Three. Eh, mna umbono lo, walom tetu. Ukuba ubunga fikanga ngelike esha kuti. Ndine ngondo nengga eti, noko bedinga zuku utasam na ngokunokwamo. Kala kufune kasi kape loko banaga ba kuti inukuzo kuzo bako independent candidate. Ukala lamdu ayokangela, kulumbu utoka nyekwe lo kumchu akulo lozo politiko. Atukubeto akua ke, nukunga neliseki, nukunga toliko aké, zinku bomkako zalotela a ebekulo. Apume ayokwenza umtizmele. Iti londi yotwa, lomdu ayungomdu funa, ukufuseki sizi ndo nefuno zabantu ngumdu onenjongo zake. Ngoko ke, abe lomdu kungeko nenda wo futi, ekuzo kuti ka ete wapula umtetu. Akakua zuku sisi inkonzo ngelshobo elefanele klayyo ebantwin, ati umele bo na kulo wad. Akonda wesisa obaleka siyomanga lakuyo. Esapo asakua zuba abizu kuti we kaloko kansi la okanyeteba, kumbula ukuba ubunesisungulo. Kwaye wanalom tetu okubo pelela ayo, wokuti awunokienza lena na lena na lena. Akonda wesao balaka lakuyo talomdu, emisebenzi eh inike eh relative siza. So, ndisama ukuti ke ngelipange, eh, mekufanu banage, ipalamente izé nendo etatile yokakule eti, nanti inamba yabantu ekufuneka ifotele lomdu, kulumte tu sishomelo. Apinde, basitale loko banaga ba, nanti imali ekufuneka eh joinenga ayo lomdu. So, nditunga fama mna ngendalo maswi, ka ndisela lo umtetu ona, ngokunokwamo andivumela nina wu engosi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Tumisani Yekele from Danzane in Ward Thirty Three. For the record, Chairperson, I do not support this bill. I am struggling to comprehend why there must be an independent candidate. The reason why I'm contemplating and comprehending this is because I have noticed that many of these people get defeated in their own political parties, in their own political processes, where they do not make it as candidates for their own political parties. And when they have failed there, they use eh the independent part of being able to contest elections in order to find themselves as being elected candidates of communities. To me, this signals a problem, and it shows that the type of person we are dealing with is not a person who is there to advance the cause of the people, but a person who is vested in their own self-interests. My main concern is the issue of accountability. Where do these people account to? Who do they account to? Because they do not belong to any particular organization. So as communities, we have nowhere to go when they are failing us to say, where do you come from? What is your mandate? And what do you stand for? So therefore, in my view, parliament should have come with clear guidelines on the threshold that these people need to have in order to be elected and the amount of money that they need to have in order to contest as independent candidates. In closing, Chairperson, I do not support the bill.
Thank you.
Alright. Good morning, Committee. My name is Mutzuli Rakivane from One South Africa Movement. For the record, we do not support this bill in its current form and believe that the bill needs extensive work before it will be able to pass number one constitutional muster. And secondly, before it will be able to satisfy the desperate needs of our developing democracy. We've had the opportunity to watch this or watch these proceedings over the last few days, and we must say that it casts significant doubt as to whether or not this process has actually been meaningful. And I say this because the education of the public has been so incredibly poor, and people haven't actually been given the proper options before them. Chair, I note even your efforts today on multiple occasions in trying to frame the conversation correctly. But at this juncture, it's actually too late. People have already been briefed by the political parties as what they must say. They already have their scripts about whether or not they care for independence or not. And those comments are actually unuseful when it comes to the end goal that we're trying to achieve in these processes. So again, I'd like to take the opportunity now to correctly frame this discussion. This is not about whether or not people believe in the suitability of independent candidates. That has been determined by the Constitutional Court, and the constitutionality of the inclusion of independent candidates is not going to change. This is also not about semantics and details that is actually in the purview of the IEC. This is about what electoral system will meaningfully and equally and best incorporate independent candidates and give the highest realization to the values such as transparency and accountability. Again, I'd like to pause and say the failure of this committee in terms of educating the public has really put this entire process in disrepute. And more than that, what should have actually happened, based on the MAC report, there probably should have actually been two bills put in front of people. The first bill, which considers the minimalist option of the MAC report, and the second, the maximist, or rather, the majority view of the MAC report. And I say this because I hold the document in front of me, and the chair had mentioned the MAC report and the fact there's two options, but this document doesn't even contain the MAC report. So again, we're discussing options which aren't properly put in front of people. And so people are actually here today to comment on a single bill and a single option instead of deciding whether or not they want a constituency-based system, which is what the majority MAC report suggests, or whether or not they want to continue on the system which is advised by the amendment bill.
Please wrap up.
Sure. On that score, I'd like to say that we need to see three important factors included in this bill. The first, which was already encompassed by the Lakota Bill, which this committee voted undesirable. The first is that we need to move to a fifty-two multi-member constituency-based system. I'll make a quick administrative point here to say that there's been much fuss about demarcations and the fact that that's going to be expensive and complicated. But the Lakota Bill already proposes that we use existing demarcations, which means that the demarcation board doesn't even need to be brought into the conversation. Having defined constituency-based systems allows for communities to directly raise issues with specific individuals. The second issue is an open party list system. And the third issue, which is where I will wrap up, is to say that we need to have a single transferable vote system. The current bill envisages that we discard people's votes. And I don't need to tell people enough that the people's vote is literally defined by the Constitutional Court as a vote, a sign of dignity and personhood. And so to discard that would be a grave injustice. Please consider incorporating a single transferable vote to ensure that literally everybody's vote counts. I thank you.
Before you take your seat, I just want to, for the record, were you not part of the oral submissions?
I was, yes. And the submissions I made today were completely different than what we had made in the oral submissions, for time purposes, as you will note from the oral submissions initially.
I have to say that it's quite, for me, I think, this is a public process, and we gave you an opportunity to present at length to the committee. And to now take time away from community presentations is a little bit unfair.
Okay.
Because we were allowing for those who have not made submissions already to now make submissions at this public hearing. So I just want for the record.
Sure.
Because you were given more than fifteen minutes to present to the committee.
Okay. I think the point to that is to say that this bill has so much work to be done that honestly, the fifteen minutes even didn't cover the length and breadth of what needs to be discussed. And I think in general, probably it's helpful to have a conversation about how we run these public participation processes. You will note that many people here today are representing one, two, maybe three organizations on our literally standing and repeating the same thing verbatim over and over again. So is that a public participation process? Or is it an opportunity for political parties to reaffirm?
Ma'am, I'm gonna stop you there because I think you're now going out of order.
Okay.
And we are not here to discuss the public participation. We're here to discuss the amendment to the electoral law.
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. I'm gonna just say that part of the...
Can you please take your seat?
I will. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yeah. Before you continue with your translations, I think it's important, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. It's very important to note that there was a process that was open. And I think I'm gonna, I want you to, or you wanna help me, MP. Can we just get a mic so that he'll do the easy closer? Yeah. Before I take the last speakers, just indulge with me. The, yeah, the first part is that I want to clarify that twenty-four months, which is the past two years, was a very strange or peculiar environment for all of us in South Africa and the world.
Ni ayazi bandubagukwetu. Noka ingundla inike ipalamente inyanga ezinka mashumi amabini anesine. Ubupane we COVID. Obekake ilizolo mzanze Afrika ne lhabati lipela. Wenzee ogokuba ezinyezezindo zingakwazu wenzewangoba de kunwonelaka.
And why I'm saying this is because it's important to note that while we do not want to blame COVID or the delays, but the reality is that we went from one lockdown level to the next, to the next, which restricted many a things that could not have normally been done under normal circumstances.
Noka singena ukweka ubupane we COVID. Kodwa siyayazi sowenge indoyogokuba. Bekuko imigado idithinde la ogokuba sishale ngolso. Indokele yo eyense ogokuba kunaginula ukuthumba nalumsedins.
And so the second part I want to clarify is public participation, which I heard many speakers mention or submit that parliament or the committee has failed public participation.
Indato inakheba yolundu. Kwenkele yo kwaka imi tetu yogoba launa nebathrapazela ayo. Siyayazi ogokubana bako abapaga misee izimfo apa ezbonagalisa umgeni.
But that's actually not the case. Because what we're doing now in the form of public hearings is the process of public participation. We've come to you as the community to get your proposals and inputs and submissions. And what we've done is that we are going to every single province in the country and spending three days in that province in different areas to get submissions and public participation on this amendment bill.
Uyabona ngobani lapanje. Ni kweki we kuenda uzonke enisuka kuzo. Ukuba lapakwe nubunina bendato inakheba yolundu. Kodwa kunjaalo. Siyayazi ogokuba. Gobani lapanje. I just want to illustrate. Gobani lapanje, bakono councila abalaba. Sikoni ward committee members ezilaba. Sikoni engosi ezilaba. Olutwe bujengbaniluniki wenzenoonge. Ailo pepe la sebukulmende in kanifika paye makaya. Eh, ninagaba namakoskas. Niti koskas uzuprenelpepe la sebukulmende in lingapaza misee. Okanyen ninagabalaba eh abatu niweyo. Eli pepe lilashage wezpeki nispetey. Lipapa ele kufuneka wezanda unekuzo. Ni okaze laba anto gokubana ohulume ipalamente krebbe. Ikulu umtetu osinika ilunge lo. Lokuthonga amalungu ipalamente angomtuzmele. Ilunge lo leno elo, nilinikuwa gumkago seku.
So this is the actual public participation process of where you are then allowed to submit. But prior to this, we had opened for a month of submissions and contributions, which I said to you from the twenty-first of January to the twenty-first of February, where you were able to make submissions, written submissions. And that process was also open. The second step was where we allowed for oral submissions of two days, and I indicated thirteen organizations or participants who wanted to present to the entire committee. It was not just half of us, but the entire committee on their detailed submission from each of those organizations.
Ukuthreniseki sa ukuvula amathuba endato inakheba yolundu. Ukusuke la ngomla we twenty-one klenyangayomkungu ujanyware. Ukuzo apa kufepu warene twenty-one inyangayonge. Sivulile ogokubana. Bongabanda bafunu tadinakheba ge zimfo zabo ezipaliweyo. Bayenze londo. Unja unje ogu abanbomzanze Afrika bayenze lenondo. Asanela ogokubana senze londo kupela. Savula inyoba insuku zambeini. Sabiza amakumchunga amakumchu. Amakumchu alishumi elnestatu. Ukuka amanye abeko abebeteta. Ebeko asbega izimfo zawo. Paya kuindlu yowiso umtetu. Kule committee ijonke ne eh no home affairs. Ogokubana, pa kaze uba ikumchulabo litinina. Yolendo. Ebekewapaga muslalo apa eteta nelene kasilisuka apa ngukwesit. Nina ele nikumchube lifumene ituba lokutheta. Paya committee in ele thubala namlanje lelabandubagukwetu abalapa abakala yobo na ufumanana itu.
And I thought it's important to just clarify because there were statements that made that parliament has failed us and we're given two years. But this was unforeseen circumstances of COVID over the last two years. And I think we must be clear about that, that it was not just a country problem, but a world problem. It was a world challenge that saw us do things differently. In fact, even parliament sits on a hybrid system where we have physical and we have virtual because we can't accommodate for the numbers in terms of COVID regulations. So it's important for us to note this, that we are not undermining the participation and contribution of the citizens of our country on this very important bill.
Kanganga ndoyogokubana ndubaguti seikalegile indoyogukweka ipalamente. Nengomo ezizi punza yoku tua ipalamente le ipunzi singomo zitu. Ngokukebanbagukwetu indwezi iteta ayo indoyogokuba. Siyasikonda imeko esipansikwazu. Kanganga ndoyogokubana nepalamente le. Ta ishala ngoku ishala ngendela indoyogokubana. Babeko abasekapa kodwa abanyo kufuneka basedenzisa ubukwepesha. Zinku boge ezo esite saboniswa zona okanyen. Safunda ngazo kulemo enendo yokwenza nalopupane. Kunjalo isitima sabandubomzanze Afrika. Nelunge lo labo lokthata inakheba. Ekukuluneni inniteto ezao bathrapazela. Ye yo nando isemkhelweni nasentlizweni yenkubose parliament.
And for the sake of progress, I just want to say that while I respect the views of the young lady and we have allowed her to speak, the purpose of public hearings is to allow for those who have not had an opportunity to present or to make submissions, to then come, and particularly for communities who don't have access to either submitting electronic written submissions, oral submissions, to be able to come to a hall in the community and be able to then give a submission.
Inenegasi ele. Noka si zamkeela izimfo ezzi asbega apa. Kodwa siyafuna uko nikapelisa njengulundu ogokuba. Intu uko ezinjengezingo banase lapase ipalamente. Zeze nu. Ni nabando abangalifumanayo ele thubalo banishale nepalamente ngalenle. Kubabona pamela amakumchu. Amakumchu esikwazi uko timana nawo. Jengendokubana besitibene namakumchu. Eh ele kumchali melayo beli ngaleye ye yogofaka izimfo.
And I also beg to differ when one makes a statement that this is a futile exercise because it undermines the views of ordinary people who took the time to be here today and to present a submission.
Siyafuna genogokuba. Ulufu oluti. Yinkritakleyasha laye nzuwa ipalamente ogokuba izohala apa. Noko alufagalekamnandi. Kubakalo kulondo ibonagalisa ogokubana. Kudeluwa obukobi nuapa. Nide nilapa nizo ksetenzisa ilunge lo leno ele gumkago seku. Kufuneka genabajonga banda banjalo abazauza apa. Bafune ukukonya denikonyela niko. Anisonka bezomdongwa anisukonyelu anenelo.
I also want to give you a very simple example. And I'll use soccer since we've been missing watching our matches recently. Some of us support Pirates. And when we go to a stadium where Kaiser Chiefs and Pirates is playing, supporters or fans of both teams will be there at the stadium. And it's cumbersome on that soccer team's fans to then attend to support their club. So for me, a simple, for me to just break this down to you is there are people who will be interested in the Electoral Amendment Bill, and there are others who will not be interested in it. And those who have an interest in it will then mobilize and want to support to come and make submissions. And there are those who feel that it means nothing to them, it doesn't affect them, and they won't want to attend it. It's the same as Kaiser Chiefs and Pirates. If you want to go and support your team, you have a choice on whether you want to go there or not.
Aisisi tekelanga genoyogokuba. Gobani lapanje. Abanye be nu. Banza betuele. Eh umyalezo aba uni kwenka amakumchu abo. Jengbanila ngobona na ka kuljaluwa ipola. Abandubaya yebale omnyukasa iKaiser Chiefs, omnyukasa eh iPirates njalonjal. Eh kodwa apa indwe ezingwonelayo. Sukuti kuba ngokwenpembele lo se kumchu okanyen ikela lakho. Liseti sukui kasa le pile. Ufune bongabanya bandu uba trabe inchongo emeshweni. Jengendoyogokubana. Ukubanga bana ufuna okuitasa ikwale lungelo lakho eh. Indo engafune kiyo. Indoyogokubana banda balapa uba tele. Ngati bo nabana yo ingondo yokuasukusringel.
Just like some of us, like KFC and others like Nando's, that's what we would take to. And I think it's important to understand the benefits of every bill. We couldn't come here and present two bills because it was not the report or the options that was presented by the committee that we needed to amend. We needed to amend the Electoral Act. So it means you must add certain things onto the current Electoral Act to accommodate for independence.
Umtetu yiluayo apa mnye ulowolwenyolo. Akomfune kwa indoyogokubana wenzewe apa imi tetu eyiluayo eya shuka shuka ney. Endawenyongo kukufagela esisishomelo se imfunegu kulumte tu uyiluayo.
And if you go through the summary page, you'll see details of which part of the current Electoral Act or bill needed to change so that we accommodate independent candidates. Previously, it would refer to only political parties or parties. Now we have to include the word independent or independent candidates. And that's the purpose of bringing the Electoral Amendment Bill to a public hearing.
Ta ojonga esishwangatelo zalomte tu yiluayo. Siyakaza esishwangatelo indoyogokubana zindoni ezifa ezzi. Paganyeso ayo ogokubana zenzi we. Ukuthreniseki sa indato inakheba yumti usmele. Londo layo ilapa unja unje ogu. Idyakanwi we kakushle ukwenzelba ikakre kumduonge. Ekufuneke bage ubanga bana kukwesimfo nisahosbega. Nisibeki ngokwalendo ilapa niboniswa ogokubana. Idinga inganjani ukuzo ide i kolekile esentlizweni si.
And the purpose of a ministerial advisory committee is purely to advise. So you are set up. You look at the options, you look at all of the different avenues, you explore it. You may have experience in research, you may have experience in different fields. You put your thoughts together, you do some homework, you go and consult, you come back and then you make recommendations. It doesn't mean that you decide on what option or what process must be followed. You make a recommendation, and then we start a process of looking at the different options and recommendations.
Injongo zela kumchu okanyen ikoto elikredisa umpatiswa. Ukuislamashongwa ne lomte tu yiluayo. Kukangelu ogokubana ngawapina amasibu uko egunokunkenwa ngawa. Sekuti ke ukebeleni wenzewe izindululo. Izindululo ke aiso zigribu. Koko siyalata ogokubana. Singakantratanjani na ukuzo sibeno ukwazi ubano umtetu ongo. Oya ukwazi nogokubana ummelane. Ne, 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 nezindo ezibekwe umtetu womkago seku.
And lastly, before we continue with the speakers, we must understand that independent candidates already contest local government spheres. So at a local government level, there is already an independent candidate that is allowed to contest. But how? They contest on a ward and not on the PR because when they contest a ward and they emerge, they become the ward counselor of that ward. So independents are already contesting the space of elections only at a local level. What this seeks to do is now allow for the independents to contest the next sphere of government, which is provincial and national. And this is not negotiable. I think I've said this many times today. It's non-negotiable, it's already passed by a court order. We are now making the amendments to accommodate for that court order.
Omtuzmele bandubaguti. Sebeko kulokulmende wamakai. Besifutile ge first ka November. Kulonyagupelaye bako omtuzmele. Oh ward councila aba yeka ogokubawena eh abanye babo. Okanye ubuninsa babo. Be tongwa gamakela opolitiko. Omtuzmele wena aba ya. Kabanda bazimele yo. So itete ukuti londo abonyuluanga ngokwe PR, ngokwe mi buto yokolitiko. Indoke ngokwenzekayo iti lomte tu injongo kukuti. Mayinga peleli apa kuchulmende wamakai. Eh pondwen masibeno umtuzmele. Kuzwelonge ekapa masibeno umtuzmele ukwenzelindoyogokuba. abandubase mzanz Africa, bazonyulele amalungu, e parlamenta, ngokwenke la bona, abawa bona ngayo.
And it's the prerogative of an independent candidate, like it is with a supporter of a club, to ensure that you then participate. So when this hearing started, from the time we started at the beginning in each of the provinces, if there were individuals who had an interest to contest the space of elections, of becoming independent candidates, it was their responsibility to attend public hearings and make submissions. And we can't then be held liable for any individual or organization or political party or institution that fails to attend a public hearing to make submissions. This should have been their prerogative to attend and make submissions.
Abanduka banenjongo sogonyuluwa. Kufuneka bayi kutalele ngokwa abo indo yokobana besi, kula mankonga alolsho. Bangabi ngabadreki, abadreka inkubo, yakuba ibashile. Kwa indo bana baba bekanda ba kwasubala apa, ifana bana ni bonu kubana komdu apa, uyao beka apitakutwa simonyulile. Yole indo gen iti, lemme, lengubo ngoku, innenega ituba lokubana, nibashuse abanda bazau nimela, nimbonendo bana lisela eli, agano kwasusmela. Sisishwengu esu, agano kwasusmela, engena ndo ilikuiba asitele ngayo.
Thank you very much, Honorable, thank you. I'm going to proceed with the three speakers of submissions. And I'm going to make a special appeal that if you have something new to say in terms of the submissions, or if you just want to say I support or I'm not supporting, but if it's something that has already been said, then if it's your turn, just say I'm already covered or that's what I was going to say, instead of us having to continue. I'm mindful of the time, I'm mindful of the fact that people were here from 10 o'clock, and I don't think it's going to be proper to keep them for more than so many hours, especially if they need to get lunch or have something to eat. And I think it's important for us to accommodate that, but again, I also don't want you to leave saying that as parliament, we didn't allow you to speak. So if you have something new to be able to say to us.
Engoska kulwesokubeka gen gababantu batatu, obamshambi, une ndube sekaya tetwanga pambili, akomfune kwa ube sani kwa ke ituba loketa. Kodwa gen ngokusoneka, ngokwetu ba kaban batatu, batete. Batete futi indo enza epatelele na lomtetosishomelo, usayilwayo. Siyabulela kakulu, ngobukobi nu, siyakone no abenila apa, osuse langenzimbi yeshumi, masisose ke si okumbele, aba bandu batatu, ba paga misesa vizimfo, engos.
Please proceed.
Mani bulalele, abomshanga pambile, nosneka gen ituba ke lo nyoba, e parlamenta yebanduin. Kamano ngutuana nka matala, abawa twenty-seven, e parvosi. Njago ke varalba se kwebo se palase, se inkuntla e parlamenta ba, me kobele, le lantwa se kuyapa. Baba binokwazi kwenzeke, ba e parlamenta mshlaambi, mi tati izimfo zabuba itasa yo. Ba ise pakwinkuntla layo, baba binokwenzeke, nka lunda nikapel. Mshlaambi, ingani kani ituba lo ba, ikpini, ikwe kwekona inkuntla le e parlamenta. Mani siyakelonda. Hmm, nitige, ba ulukwazi ba, nithina batala se ngolelele ndinga kubanjani. Eh ukuka, ukuka ata, oka ye ukukhusela, aboba se sibomva na ken. Abange na, abange na ngentjongo za, abazo zozizi itlotisa. Tekangbenga lunga indoba, ta njago kuyo nyolo, lo, lo, mzekelele ngenge, lo, twenty twenty-six. Kufakwe indo eighty, kodu twenty-five ma, kobe so kaliso om tusmela, ba tekangaba banga ngenela kulo nyaga. Bafaki submission zabu, kuse, ngoro tlalifika. Be 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 bebebe tumele, kukukhusela lantwiti, nia tindi ku insa ngoku. Nifakindwa zamdo ngavotelo, ndeku iti eh, do ngavotelo, debona tlalifikile manizmela, ya bo. Ukhusela ndwe zimela kunjalo, ninni kituba no ba ngonyaka, oka ye nyaga intanatna ngapesuruke. Obaba, umtungu, otangba lo nyaka, kusa, oyakloha, ngabango, yu tusmela, abefaka nguka, abekaluse benza, ngukusbenzalo, okwa, tekangaba ngakumbe, ngakumbe le batalin. Nguosbinida, ngukwalo yvesa. Pako bo tusmeleke abo. Ta besale be kuba, ke, be nyulanga abo banda banyulile, ngabatali ke. Kube koi indo eighty, ta kutrako kuba, inda be beimela, aga yezo wanelikli, wanelisekila, waneliseka batali. Kube koi, ani ku ituba, akontapiliteti. Ma katumeli zinto, oka ye batali nubanasan, kuba akusena batali. Ja wanimdeklenda, wanimdeku yo.
Please wrap up.
Okuba oko, akwenzi la, akwenzik. Nguosolo ti onjalitswe likwazi mbuwe selumva, limkupo kuba, luka koka kuba pawiye lisekusake. Eh, ya. Kodwa gen, nenene ye na le le pile, oka ye, oso skibo se inkuntla ke. Asa, asono abe, asi, asamkeela nga, kodwa, kuba se siskibo, se inkuntla. Kulungitshanjalo, masolo ti anambalo, ave la yo. Anjengo, e akontapilita batalin, kube kone, nenda, oyu office apo. Xlamutwe, ze, ulonyula tato, iminyaka mshlaano.
Okay, I'm gonna have to ask you to... I've asked you to wrap up and you haven't, I'm gonna have to ask you to stop because you're over the time now.
All right. Nguosbinida, maka, kaya batali nposa, ninkubanjani.
Please translate for him. Thank you.
Sorry for the dialogue, Chairperson.
You can make a written submission to the staff if you have it written down, you can just give it to them, sure.
Thank you, Chair, my name is Tulani Majala. I want to submit that parliament must take the views of those who do not support this bill back to the Constitutional Court that made this ruling because this ruling does not sit well with us as the communities, as it relates to the independent candidates being allowed to contest elections. But I also want to say that we will find it very hard as communities to hold independent candidates accountable. In light of this, there are many instances where these independent candidates will use many loopholes to find themselves as elected representatives of people. Therefore, I want to submit that independent candidates must submit their applications to contest elections in advance and start working with communities in advance so that we may see that they are people who want to be independent candidates but who are here to serve at the behest of the people. So because they do not come from any particular organization, we do not necessarily know what they stand for. And if the application is done in advance, we may be able to track the individual in terms of what development they bring to the community. We want to avoid people mushrooming out of nowhere and calling themselves leaders of communities. We want candidates who claim to be independent to be able to be elected as is per the will of the people. So therefore, there must be clear criteria set for independent candidates in order for communities to be able to vet them. This must be at a very high standard. I want to emphasize that I do not support the Constitutional Court ruling, it does not sit well with me. But because it is a ruling of the Constitutional Court, I am bound to accept it. In closing, I do not support the bill as it stands. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can you just translate this for me? That we are taking submission if there's something new. We don't want, because I've heard this submission many times, that we don't support this, and I'm saying again, you don't have a choice on whether you support the Constitutional Court ruling or not. Neither do we as parliament. It's a ruling, we have to accept it. You may have a view of not wanting to accept independence, yes. But a court ruling is a court ruling and we have to all adhere to that. You may not want to agree with the bill, and yes, you can say that. But saying that we must go back as a committee to the Constitutional Court is improper. It's not something that can happen and will happen. So, and please just make sure that submissions are new submissions and not repeating what has already been said.
Dingosla, lobendines, taylosokubana singapinda pindi, izimfo, esele zibeki wenga pambili. Omzekele, umf izimfo, ezianvelana, nomteto owiswe inkuntla, epaga mileyo, the Constitutional Court yala pa East South Africa, eti indo ogobana abantu, bafumeleke ile, ukuba bazimele. Tabefuna uniuluwa, eluntwi, lowo omteto, umisi ukeke, awusose uchi, kenekomi ti echeli apa ya se parlamenta, ayinalo ilungele yo kuu utika nomtetu. Apa besitela izimfo eziteta, ngomtetu oyilwayo, ulonyulu. Na lapo, ta uzisa izimfo zako ngapambili, sukupinda pinda indo esele itetiwe. Usishalo na wowonge amalungu ekomi ti echeli apa, sele epale pantzi izindo ezitetiwe. Koko kuya telo ukuba, gen nga yetresha, abantu mangapinda pindi izindo esele zitetiwe. Ukuba uvilo ba, indo ubo zaiteta, sele itetiwe ngomniya umtowe betetela ngapambili, asiko isitigo sokuba uyipinde, ngoba, usishalo nekomi ti echeli apa ngapambili, sele besi palezo, ngke ezosimfo. Engos.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Good day, everyone. My name is Andile, I'm from Ward fifty in Islanan. I pretty much applaud the Constitutional Court for giving us this judgment. It's been long overdue because we've seen what has been happening in South Africa. I'm not kind of, uh, giving critiques to these guys who, from these political parties who are ruling us and those who are kind of like the other political parties. But in terms of independent candidates, it's good because it's always been said that the people shall govern, and now it's time for us to govern. But the question you said, Chair, is how? I would like, because I've been in meetings with most ward councillors and ward committees, they always say that if we go to these board of councillors, we don't have power because there are votes. We would find, I'm sorry to mention the podcat parties, we would find that the ANC councillors are, the numbers is above the TA councillors, so the TA councillors don't have power. So that's how people, they can't, they don't get service deliveries. Now, if the parliament would kind of give clear mandate to the individual candidates, I think the people will have, will govern this country. That's what I just wanted to say because in terms of these political candidates, I think it's enough, it's enough, guys. Please help us as the parliament. Thank you.
Thank you.
Engoska kudushalo, ekamalamdi ngu Andile, nswaka e ward fifty, e mondi, ndime apa ka uzokhasa, lomtetosishomelo ozonyulu. Mani kwa bilisandla kakuli, inkuntla mta kosiseko, ngokuba isinigela ituba lokba, sile amashongwane, lomtetozonyulu ka nineteen ninety-eight. Eh, kubaluleke ile indoba na kespe na baba khatso bazimele yo. Kubakalo kumkatkosiseko, welele izwe, ukeka ka, okue katshungu indoba, abantu bo la ula. Koko ken ngoku siyala, bulala kakule ituba, ababa khatso ke, mabani kwe imandite, oka ye ke, bani kwe umiyalelo otakile yo, ukwenzele indoba inkonzo, zye abanduin, ya bulala slav.
Thank you, you may proceed. Yes.
Mani bulise. Kuchepesin. Ndibulise. Kuskeba esilapa. Ndibulise. Kubantu bo ngi abala pa, kulindu. Igamalam, ndingunobe sutu duze. Osuka, kwa ward thirty-seven. Okwameke, endizo kuteta. Ndizo ku, namla. Kulamas, swapatelewe yo tinapapa. Okwame, endiza kuteta. Kubama ndibulele, ogokuba, ukulumende ezile, ne inkonzo kuti, masibulele londa. Sisi ti, ka siteta. Siteta ngesindo ekutwa zyasixia, ezinyasina zufuma. Kodwa namthlanje, sibulela, ogokuba sitisizfumene, ibaleke ileleyo indiima. Ka ndiza, kala kuteta, ndiza kuteta, ngatdemoklasa. I demoklasa eskuyo, esiti ukulumende ka, esiza na lompoposho, ukajiwe yo. Ukuba besinoku ya ku demoklasa, siteta ngatdemoklasa eti, sine, liswi, we ever say. Singukulumende. Akustwa unesei, itilondo layo, uyayipanga itdemoklasa. That itdemoklasa ye yam, nam ye yam. Ayoyo ya kuchulumende demoklasa, ye ye tuti na bantu. So kufuneka natisi ipanga itdemoklasa li. Apo ndiza kona ken, ndiza indo eti, ka sisi ti sine sayi, nalama kumchwazmele yo. Anesei nao, indo eti, we have got the right, sina lo, ilugele. Kodwa ke, ilungele eli kufuneka ulazile indo eti wkebeleni, liamba ne responsibility. The responsibility, endiza kuti, kan siti ndiateeta mna. Na baba abantu, the independence, yonakaiteta, fanga singa i undermine ni, izimbo zayo. Jangmasisi citizens, njani thumba mna, sifuna leno winkulu, isa kwa ka esisi zwe, siti tina sisi citizens as a South Africa. Ukuba aba abantu as bafaki that is independence, pofukese ruloe out. Bika kile, ngoba kaduke wkebeleni, na baba sisi citizens as a South Africa. Now, ukuba inga kisa abala, even if natisi ku governance, oka ye sesipete, eh, sina zindo esinyeka zifuma ni kubo, that is the independence. Esiti wkebeleni, we need the integrity thinking. We need izindo ezauti zifumisa, kanya indo eti nam di gum South Africa. So sifuna ezozindo, asifuni indo eti wkebeleni, ifumelo lakho obulfakile, ibirifumelo eliti, kaku stwa indo incha, masibene ndo eti, laya eti, sifaka ifumelo sia contributor towards building our nation. So masipangeke, is South Africa encha, ukwenze indo ogobasi zobane, South Africa encha, songe, I support the notion.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Let me take this opportunity to say all protocol observed. Eh, I'm standing here, Honorable Chair, to...
to especially thank government for bringing services like this gathering nearer to the people. Uh, Chair, I want to dwell on the concept of democracy, to say that people must have a say in a democratic order. Same as the notion which says that we must have these independent candidates, because it's part of a democratic compensation. Uh, we must also acknowledge that if you are saying you have rights, rights are go hand in hand with responsibility. Therefore, let's claim our democracy as South African citizens. I thank you, Chepessin.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, I'm going to be guided by the House. Um, we can still allow for, for further submissions, but provided that the submission is going to be something different from what we have already heard today. We've had twenty speakers, just one minute, we've had twenty speakers today. So if you're going to come and tell us something that we've already heard from the twenty, it defeats the purpose of keeping people here. I want to hear if there's something different, something new that you have to contribute. Okay. Oh, you do? Okay, thank you. Yes, Chief, you, 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 that's two. Three. Provided that it's something new, sir, you've already spoken. And, and you've already spoken, I've given you an opportunity. So are you saying you're gonna do something new? Yes. Oh, yes, okay. Sure, let me hear your view. Stop then. Let me tell you where the only challenge is. So I'm gonna be guided by my fellow MP, Honorable Member. Some of them start speaking in Eastekosa. And so before I can know that they are not speaking on the topic, they are already halfway through. So I'm going to be helped by, by my, my, my fellow Honorable Member. Uh, but if it's in English and if I feel that you are already off, and it's not something new, I'm going to, I'm going to use that and ask you to, to please be seated. Uh, sir, yes, you can take the seat. I saw you. There was a hand here, there was a hand somewhere here. Yes, sir, please, please take that seat. Because this is going to be the final round of, of submissions. I, ma'am, I saw your hand. I don't know if it's something new or what. Sorry, no, no, you, sorry, there's, there's, yeah. Thank you. Is that, uh, nobody else? Nobody else who feels they have something new to present? Right, so these are the six. Okay, now you have an afterthought. You want to speak? Do you have something new? Please take the seat there.
Ibalali. Eh, ibalali bakuti. Usalalo apa uti. Uyakela ndosa kuti, nokosina thunakali. Yegonda ke. Ubanga bana lendo ibisele ikulue ngesuprano ngomye. Ayususki fakale okuba wenui kula ngetena. Goba indeba lekleba ikuliwe. So umweno agendoyoko ba. Kaso umenge nyawa, akondu imbi nepsho nguzenga ndoba na atumpusele umenge nyawa. Utiku ye, ayile nuu iteta uyayipinda se iteti. Ibanatinkuku umtata ngobana lomdu. Agakanga bekanu iklingi lelendo pamgondoba na itet. So siabongo zareban bakuti. Jemba nilapanje. Nyani nyani. Kwendozonge iteti weyo apa. Sikolela okubana. Enlowo na lowo uzanenduancha.
Thank you. We are going to proceed. Thank you.
Man di tabate eli toba. Ndilifumene yo. Nense di tibana di fumane. Man di buli seke uchepe sin. Di buli se, ribasonge kacheli naso itafli. Di buli seke ingo endisboni layo pakati kwe itu. Eka menile ngosu Yesu wa se Nazaret. Ndingu misisimbu iswa Mkoiswa. Ndi pa Emonti, eh Cambridge, eh Watford. Ndi mele ezengonzo. Ndi tena ma kenndizenga leminana namthlanje kaktwa ipa la mente ilapa. Ibisifikeleke kodwa tinana izolo. Izo sitakese langa lomtimpawa namthlanje. Mna eyo nando endi meleyo apa ndizokasa. Ndisoti engosi kusomanda. Ndi vile okonumdu abeka watete siti. Eh, we uyayibona, uyayivalento, uyayovalo mteto uzile yo kuti. Kodwa indema ingenzwa indoba na. Kussejenzi swaindo bana mna. Ndi tikandisuka kipate tille nbetwele nbetileyo. Ndiso, mis, ndizimele. Ndi tandilela ndaiteta yo, noba tande nebe tibana uyapoklisa. Ngokwe Bible iasta elela. Yonkinto apemshabeni. Ika lo angumuntu kanti sa ngatabantu. Ndi ten gosi ndizo ikasa lomteto ufakeluayo. Ndiamba nawo. Ngoba nditenda ujonga ndaupala se la. Ndatanda na lendo ndiboni ngosi. Nda bonba alright, inoma apa sikalu ndalash apa. Because ilizwe linyeke, nyake lilendo liyo. Ngenkani abantu apenza izindo ezingamye nomteto katiko. Abantu kwe lilizwe bayabula la. Kulemibuto i twenty eleven. Apemshabeni, abantu bayabula la. Ke ngai ndoba na onkuntu ufunu kuja. Siambula ilutiko. Enzito angumuntu. Noba neswento oniglopatiake kodwa tinana. Siwonmusi neti. Ke buyelo epa kuandalash. Goba le into yonke yale demokrasa. I sense langa ndwa siwonank. Kwa kusbonda. Kwa kusiwakwa bondi lali yonke. Abantu be, 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 be pilonga kusbonda. Kodwa fumasme lali ni. Akondwa enzwa, umtukawa izinda rokupewa kusbonda. Na ngoku siabulela. Osa konyuluwa umtungabantu. Ojajabasa ukala bamkala sele. Goba ngoku amasela konan goksiti nuwa nawo. Ni zinda siwonayemshabeni. Kodwa sibulela ilutiko. Ndiso ikasa lomteto. Ndisoti maubeke pampi. Tiko magasineti. Akibelele. Abengutiko. Asbona kali sena kulo angumteto. Oba uyayosebenze bantu. Ke kamalka Yesu wa se Nazaret. Amen.
Amen. Summary.
Thank you, Chepessin. My name is Mrs. Mkoiswa from Emonti. Um, we must guard against people who want to use being an independent candidate to, to serve themselves only. The bill will help us alleviate corruption, because currently we only have a crop of leadership who are self-serving and not serving the interests of the community. In this respect, the bill will allow us to have a person who will be chosen by the people. Therefore, Chepessin, I want to emphasize fully that I support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Just that she used much more expression. Check the mic, please.
I'm all right? Okay. Eh, Chepessin. Eh, oh nine point eight, we last page, which is page twenty. I am not happy with the last paragraph, which is nine point eight. Eh. Amakusi gabona bantu backgrounded to the people, right on the ground. So, Kai City Department, the state law advisors. Asbonaga sti ngosokuba. Kui wokuwa. Andiboni a right law. Because abantu boongaba balapa, abantu be ngos. Oko kan. So, di kela londilungiswe. Okwesibini. Andi kela zonge zirijinsa zoi six. Zalapi Eastern Capes, kogelyezingos. Ikomkan. Masini kuele information. So that isibiza abantu baso, iconstituencies zazu. Siwonisane, galomtimp. Galachege, ekui electoral bill. Because tinasi ba comfortable kakutle. Kasitoka kwe ziyazi twizilili. Na ngoku, andi, dinazwi, in, in, izindo benkaskenndisboze apa. Ndiso kaita yeluakuzu. But I am not comfortable. Because, slesesitukumise. Ezinye intiziyo esbutatakazabanya bantu. Because, nza wenzumseke. Abantu abaninzia abastemi iindependent candidates. Because of, i lack of accountability kuso. Because they've got experience, kwimibuto ya abo alright. Who deploy people who are not coming back to their constituencies. Now, bendiza banavium na eti. Why do we fund them? With public best. Funega lukabe kunsegile baba yalandela nyanga bantu basa wina. They must spend their own money to campaign and do all these things themselves. Because they are sure that they are going to win and they are not going to betray the people. So, bendiza banalo advise, law advice in chat. Omye umbuzebendiza obosa. Jay, this is more, anyana question. Okuti, if I am an independent candidate in this current situation. I manage to garner a million votes. Am I the only person who must go to Parliament? Or must I have, or must I appoint another, other members of my corps to go with me to Parliament? Because if you vote for a ward councillor, which is i-independent and lose, then that ward, that independent candidate falls off. Maybe in the next election, that person is not coming back. But he used our money, our public money in the previous elections. So I think those needs, some sort of technocratic ideas to look at those, because I, I don't want to be confused. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, let's, interpretation, yeah. While she's doing that, it's important to note that an independent contests as an independent, as one person, while political parties contest as a collective, as a political party.
Thank you, Chair. Sir, I did not get the name. Did not get the name, so I'll just. Thank you, Chair. Um, as it relates to section nine point eight um, in the Amendment Bill, I find that chiefs are mostly disregarded in government in general. And my suggestion would be that all regions with chiefs must be given an opportunity to call their constituencies to educate and inform them about this bill. There are many things that we discuss with our constituencies, but as it relates to this bill, we have not had that particular opportunity. The issue of independent candidates is that mainly in my analysis, they are not trusted due to the fact that they cannot be held accountable. This is the view of many sitting here today and myself as well. The other fundamental part is that independent candidates must pay for themselves in order to contest in any election. This will ensure that public funds are not wasted and that independent candidates take the risk, full responsibility of running as independent candidates. And the question was, as the Chair already answered, is that if I am an independent candidate and I garner votes, am I the only person who goes to Parliament or do I go with a group? So in summary, there must be clear criteria set for independent candidates so that they know that there is a standard that they must adhere to in order to stand as independent candidates. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, you may come to the mic.
Oh, mani. Mani sbulisale, uh, to all the leadership that is in front of us and also to the House in general. Uh, but, Speaker, I'm rising, good point, eh. The reason I'm trying to be different is that I reject this Amendment Bill with, with, which relates to this, uh, independent candidate selection because I am informed by the concept of leadership on its own. Because the concept of leadership, in principle, a leader is someone who is identified. But now, the opening of this space of that someone can be able to impose himself on being a leader. To me, it is perpetuating the personality cult problem to which we all know here as South Africans, that people are self-serving, people. Now, this bill is allowing that space to perpetuate because it's not sorting, or it's not bringing anything different from the point of being identified. Because a leader is supposed to be someone who is identified first. That is the, the qualities of a good leader. But now, the, 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 the current situation is at this level as a country. There's much of distortion of facts because I'm informed by the background which says more people who are contesting as independent, uh, candidates are the people who are bitter and the people who would think that they can run on their own. Now, for me, what is different about the, the point that I'm, I'm standing here is that they are perpetuating a personality cult, which that personality cult is the, is one that is bringing problems to the society in general. Because we know that we were unbent as a country since nineteen ninety. Now, it opens the space of people who are taking opportunities to perpetuate this concept, because it's distorting the position of leadership in the idea that they are serving the people. That is where I have a problem with this Amendment Bill. I thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, um, my name is Ngululeko Mpekwaa from Ward twenty here in Buffalo City. Thank you.
Ngululeko Mpekwaa, eh, Ward twenty, apa eh, Buffalo City. Sisaloo. Ni pagama ni ikaba ngawa omane eh, lena mango yolo mtetosomele uylwayo. Inzo ngozaloo ndogesalo ndoba kukola ngamango yokba kokuliswe umtu oinkokele. Inkokeleke ngokua musaloo kufuneka ithongwe ikuliswe ibone kwa